At the court order.
Please sit.
At 7:02. Row call.
Madam Chair, acres.
President.
Commissioner Rasen.
President.
Commissioner Misen.
President.
Commissioner Camell. Commissioner Kappa.
President.
Commissioner Freesno Lyons.
President.
Commissioner Bonkowski here. Okay, and for the record, Jeff Shoder, Village Commander, sitting here.
Okay, um, next will be approval of the agenda. Some things came up, uh, everybody knows this agenda was printed two weeks ago. Since the office was closed. Uh, so we have some items to add under matters of consideration. Uh, old business. We have Chris Benjamin here, code enforcement officer, to lead some discussion about changes that we need to do on the codes. Second, I'm just gonna turn the floor over to President Dova. He wants to, uh, share some thoughts with us. New business. Set public hearing date for special land use for 58680 Victoria. Everything else, oh, in the planners' reports. You can just, Jeff, announce those.
I can't hear you out there.
You can't hear me?
No, I can't hear you.
So, Chris is... So, Chris is speaking now, I'm sorry, I wasn't following you?
That was number two under...
That's gonna be your number two under old business. Okay, thank you.
Any other additions, changes, concerns, questions? Well, entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
So moved and seconded, uh, to accept the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alrighty. Approval of minutes from December the 5th. Uh, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Supported.
Alrighty, moved and supported to accept the minutes from December the 5th as presented on the paper.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's like, Chris, we don't move that this fast to the whole agenda. We're gonna get to you. Old business. Chris?
What about, um, communication correspondent workshop?
Nothing from communication workshop.
Okay.
Okay, Chris.
I agree with it. Yeah, Chris Dover just asked me to come and have you question any questions about some of the way certainly ordinances I've written and how to enforce them. Most ordinances in townships or villages, you people make the ordinances draft of the attorneys basically look at them, make sure they're not gonna be any questions or legal aspects to them, and then they're passed by you people and then I enforce it. So, um, I know we do have some that I've written some tickets on lately. Uh, we were going to court for some, two of them that have been, uh, people that were that were in violation of breaking a water stop box. And it was replaced and repaired by the village water department. And those pursued, taking those people to court to get reimbursed for the funds that cost the village to do that. And then one of them, another one that is over on Carter Street, that's a, uh, wrote a ticket on that just before the holiday. He sent out to the individual because of the flight that's on the property. Those two violated, all those three violations have all been in court. Two of the court dates have been set, and I'm still waiting for the third one to be set. So, I don't know if anyone has any individual questions that they wanted to go over about the ordinances or...
I have a question, not necessarily about the ordinance, but like what is your procedure as far as observing and writing up or ticketing or what you do? Like what is your procedure that you follow?
Uh, well, normally I would go out, inspect the site. I can, I do leave a violation notice on the site, right there on the site if it's in a violation. I write the ordinance section on there and then give them a quality of time to get either repaired or depending on what it is, if it's high grass, high weeds, broken windows, roof repairs that need to be done, missing siding. That seems to be a big issue in a couple of the subdivisions that Lombardo built in. Seems like most of the, uh, it was basically the vinyl wood siding that was put on the buildings that either blew off in a windstorm and the, either the renter or the owner had not replaced it or repaired it yet. So, we rewrite those underneath the property maintenance code. So, that covers a lot of that type of things, high grass, missing siding, and things like that.
So, like prior to the visit, like do you canvass the community or how do you, how do you decide or does someone lead to these properties?
Yeah, most of it goes through based on a complaint. That either a homeowner will either email me a complaint on my email address that I've supplied to the village for them to email me, or a phone call, or they can make a complaint form, leave it here. And I usually come in one or two days a week and take care of those.
Okay. Which I know that's not a lot of time, I mean, this could be a full-time job given the community.
Well, in summer it probably gets more busy. Right now, you know, I mean, with the weather conditions that we've been, you know, most outside contractors aren't doing much work in this kind of weather.
Right. Right. The only reason I ask that question is I know in the community I've often heard that people feel as if they're, yes, they are not following the ordinances, but at the same time they're kind of feeling targeted a little bit. And, you know, my camper is, has to be removed, but my neighbor two doors down didn't get notice about his, and I've heard a lot of that. So that's, that's why I'm asking that question.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's the problem, because someone will call in and complain about, like you said, there's one neighbor, you know, two doors down from him, but then the one that's in the back of the subdivision doesn't get called in.
Right.
Well, because they didn't go by there, the person that is making the complaint didn't see it, you know, uh, I have been going through my, what I normally do if I get a complaint is I will run the rest of the subdivision or the rest of that street or so and find out what's going on. And then I write those down, and then the next time I'm in that area, I'll go by and see if it's still there.
Okay.
If it is, then I write the violation.
Right. But if you, if you get a call, um...
Those are priorities, basically, yeah.
Okay, so if I have a camper and I get a call, you come out and I have a camper and I'll get the violation, but if someone a few doors down has a camper, you'll just come back next month to see if it's still there?
Well, the next time if I give those people a couple of days off, I'm then back in the, working the next day. Sometimes I'm out here two or three days a week, so just depends on how much work I got.
Right. Oh, and I get that, it's two days a week, but I'm concerned about consistency.
Yes.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's really, um, I'll guess I'll use the word fair. Do you know what I mean? Like I said, targeting, the word targeting has come out a couple of times. So I'm not sure if that's, as a village that we need to maybe do something different?
Right, right, right. Well, I found that this village here, most of the people have lived here for quite a long time. They've gone through generations living in the same house. They've kept their trailer parked at their property for 20, 25 years because the village wasn't on top of it to get them to move them. And now all of a sudden, you know, certain village members wanna tighten it up and make people observe the ordinances.
Right, and I agree with you 100% on that. Cause I mean, I keep my property neat and tidy and I hope my neighbors appreciate that and do the same for me.
Right.
But at the same time, I have a concern about being, I don't know, anyone else wanna, and please tell me if me and you may approach isn't incorrect, you know, I'm often doing that.
Correct is good.
So Commissioner Bonkowski's point, I mean, if you're, um, recording the addresses of other violations for the same reason that you're out there, it would seem like they would be up for that immediate violation notice just to say that's the other address that you're there for.
Yeah, right, well, the problem is, is when someone calls or emails and when I go out on that piece of property, I go out with, out there with the information, their name, the proper address of the site, and that, to give, to write the violation. So if I see one down the road that I don't have the name of the person, or I don't have, don't recognize if it's rental or whatever it is, you know, you might, you have to really leave the violation to the proper people, but the owner of the property, not actually the person that's living there. So, I always like to leave it to the person that owns that property. Even though they may not live there, that's where I write the violation to.
Right, so is it just a matter of just recording the addresses and then we get back to...
Yeah, then I come back in the office, I run those, I'll make up a new slip for them and then go back out, the next time I'm out, I'll go back out, you know? So I mean, if, uh...
It just seems like maybe that should be expedited a little bit more...
Well, again, I think, I think you would agree, if your camper was tagged and mine wasn't, you would feel like, well, wait a second, why is this happening? And I'm assuming the camper is an example, that was a hot topic in the summer. Okay. Yeah, and I agree with you that maybe tighten up that procedure, maybe we can help him, I don't know how we could help him, but...
Yeah, is it, is it a matter of, and I hate to go down this road in some ways, but is it a matter of like needing the technology that when you're out at the property that you could look up that property information?
Uh, well, or that, or that, or I can either call into the office and get that information on right there on the site, yeah, if you want it, if you wanna do it that way.
So is the violation like left on the door or something like that, or is it...
Generally, yeah, I usually tape it to the door.
Okay.
And violations don't caliphine with them, correct? Does that, the violation is just the warning?
No, well, the violations, uh, that I, that I, when I first came here, were just a small little card like, alright? The violations I'm leaving now are the violation, full violation sheet that we have documented that we're gonna, actually, we can either violate them once, twice, or three times, or we can cite, give them a citation, which is basically then a court appearance after that. So it's everything's on the same form.
Okay, so for the violation notices, the first one that you leave on the door, is there any monetary impact, monetary filing associated with it?
Uh, not normally on the first one, but once we get to the second, third, and then the, of course, the court citation, yeah, or what I call it usually.
What if they were all mailed?
Uh, well, I do that too, you know, if I get back to the office and I, I see that I had like three or four additional properties in there that we had, what I'll do right then is send a letter out.
Okay.
I do send a letter out, right.
Okay, so back, going backwards, if I was tagged and you seen him, you're mailing him something to say, hey, seen.
Right, right, the same violation is there, I'll give you 74 days to get it cleared out of there, or a lot of times the people will call me after they get the letter and say, you know, how do we settle this, what do you do, you know, how can I resolve this situation?
Okay. And we wanna help you, you know, cause we appreciate what you're doing, but and we wanna help you out in any way that we can.
Right, right. I know Dan, honey, we've talked to Dan quite a few times. I know Dan's kind of philosophy out of this to, you give them one violation notice, you give the second one, or either a letter after that, and then automatically goes to a court citation. Now, I don't know how you people wanna handle something like that, if you wanna go that quick right to a court citation. You know, there's a lot more involved than a court citation. At one time, I thought I, through one of the, uh, office, police officers that was here, one of the sergeants, I was able to get the birth date and the driver's license number that the court needs on the citation or violation to take it to court. I can't do that anymore. He found out from his upper higher supervisor that that was, he can't do that. So, we have put forth to get a program that's gonna be a computer program through the state that I can look up that information. I was using the same program over in McComb, so I'm familiar with it. So, but we applied for it, I don't think, I know, I don't think, I was in yesterday, I don't think Sharon said anything about that, that we had received any information from them to get that program yet. We're still waiting for the state to respond. So I'm sure they were closed down for the holidays too, so...
Right.
So, I think, you know, if I, I don't wanna speak on a turn if anybody else wanted to chime in, but I think, you know, it's good to have you here and for everybody to hear, you know, the process and procedures that we have. Because even at our last meeting, one of the commissioners said, well, do we even have a code enforcement officer? Cause there's still is just that, I guess that stigma or that perception in the village that just stuff still isn't, you know, necessarily being enforced. So, just, you know, we need you to be a bulldog.
Yeah, right, well, we can, we can go, if that's the way you wanna be, you wanna be, just drive it right through, that's fine. But if it's smoking you like this, I can play it right now, I don't, once the backlash starts...
Yeah, I don't think that we necessarily wanna be driving through the circuit court all the time, but sometimes sending people with, you know, their wallet.
Yeah, right, right. Well, the three I have issued have, you know, they're just ignoring us. The one lady did send a complaint, the first citation I sent to her, denying all responsibility, that she didn't have anything to do with it, that's fine. But I told her, I says, you're the one that is the house owner. If you have people living there and they did something to it, it's still your responsibility, even though they damaged it or they did something to it. Because the written, uh, information I have from Marcus, affidavit that I have written from him, you know, I mean, there was a gentleman who was sitting on the front porch basically laughing at him as they were repairing the stop box.
For fines that we levy against, um, property owner, would we be able to actually put that against their taxes or a lien against the property or something like that?
Yes, that's the way that the citations are written, and it can go against their, as a lien or...
So it does have some weight to it.
Yeah, yeah, but once you take them to court, they'll, they'll have to pay the court right away. They, they don't get out and walk away from the court.
Right, yeah, but of course others the court costs to the village.
Right, right. Well, yeah, I have to appear, I have to take the citation up there, have to get it witnessed, bring it back, mail it out. I was told that we didn't have to do it certified mail, so I'm not doing it certified mail, I'm just mailing it out, and as long as it doesn't come back to the village saying that, you know, there's no one that would accept the mail, that they couldn't deliver it, the US Postal Service couldn't deliver it, I believe that they have it. And that's the assumption that the court also takes, that they received it, then the court sends out a court date, uh, notice on it. And we also get a copy here, so I get a copy of it. So everything's scheduled basically for February, the 22nd of February is the next court date that we've got to everybody.
I believe some of those charges too can be levied against that, as long as it's written appropriately in the ordinance, I don't know if it is or not, but then typically that can happen. And then I would make an assumption that the gentleman on the porch is more of an isolated incident?
Right.
So, and you talked about the siding, so I assume somebody that's getting a notice about siding right now, this doesn't have to be happening in 10 days?
No, I mean, you know, I spoke to most of these people that I left the notices for, they're either roof missing, shingles missing, siding missing. Most of them contacted their insurance company. Someone would say they can't find any people to come out and do the work to repair it.
Right.
And in fact, in Lombardo subdivision, I saw some siding, gentleman working up the street on one of Lombardo's homes, and stopped there and asked him myself, hey, would you guys be interested? We've got some residents here deciding Lombardo built the homes, the siding's blown off, would you be interested to be able to go over and help them out and get it repaired? The guy's, I'm so busy, I couldn't read it.
Right, that's the climate right now.
Yeah, I mean, unless the economy slows down or the building business slows down.
Right.
I guess that's, I mean, even though I'm retired, I'm just as busy as I was when I was working.
And I ask that because I hope, you know, I want us to be able to work with people.
So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, do you have a question?
Good question. About, in the recent past, this group passed a new master plan for the village, and along with that were some recommended zoning changes, and those were just some minor things to change some multifamily to, to back to light industrial. But I guess my question is, as you're doing your code enforcement and you're working along Gresham, say in our general business district, are there any things that you've seen in the zoning code that should be addressed? That you feel that would make enforcement better or prevent conflict? Cause those are some things that this committee or this body has some power over.
Well, Gresham Avenue, 26 mile road, did you have some complaints about, you know, the amount of storage people were storing out in front of the buildings? Some of those we've addressed and most of it got all repaired or resolved. Whether or not you wanna try to go for, to make them all put privacy fencing up in front of their property so it can't be seen from the mile roads or from Gresham? You know, whether you would allow them to put fences up? I know when I talked to some of them, that's what they said you would wanna do if you would allow it, would be to put privacy fencing up across the front of the property, you know, just even with the front of the building or whatever, and just to hide it, just so it's not seen out of sight, out of mind, basically. Whether or not the community would wanna do that?
It was the same comment I had.
Right.
Like you've come across anything, you know, that any of the ordinances you are trying to enforcing, because of some words and, you know, I know there's some of them that are outdated or, you know, confusing, so if you ever come across one, you know, particularly that you need to be updated, always let us know.
Right, 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 yeah. Well, I like to do a face-to-face with people most of the time, you know, even if I see a trailer or something, or somebody's got something parked, I'll go up, ring the doorbell, see if anybody's home, tell them who I am, say, hey, you know, the community, the board has given me a direction that they wanna start cleaning up the neighborhoods, getting it more presentable for more people to move into, and that. And most people are acceptable of that, but then their other answer is, well, it's been parked here for 20 years, now you want me to move it? Alright, so, I mean, I know when Dan and I talked about it, I tried to tell Dan, Dan, that's a fine way to go, but you gotta remember, these people have lived here, they've lived this way for years, you know, and you're not gonna get cleaned up in a month.
And Chris, we've been trying to get it cleaned up for years.
Well, right, right, I know then the other code enforcement officer, um, I know he, he would write a lot of violations and stuff like that, but he just didn't take them to court. So, I mean, once we take a few of them to court, and I'm sure the word's gonna get around the village. You know, I would cause drag into court because I didn't get the garbage cleaned up or get the swing set out of the easement area on the side of my house. So, you know, breaking water stop boxes. You gotta pick the ones you're gonna go after, go after them, and then the rest of them, hopefully you can get them, and most people will comply. I mean, they had the gentleman that had missing shingles on his roof over there in the sub across the street there, and it took him almost three weeks to get it repaired, but he got it repaired. So, I mean, by the time, you know, I go by there twice, I finally talked to him face-to-face, and he said, oh, you know, I got the shingles and they were laying right there in the driveway, you know, behind his vehicle. He says, I just haven't had the time to get up there and get it done. These people are working.
And we had some weird weather.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this week you're not gonna get anybody out there doing the siding, I'll tell you that. Alright, anything else?
Any other comments?
Do we, do we keep a list of any kind of resources, like for seniors, any assistance or low income for help with that?
Uh, I'm not sure what type of, uh, community or county help you can get? Yeah, there is some out there, but, uh, I think the only one that, uh, was a house owner on Chinook that was on the corner of Carkin, Chinook there, where the lady had like, uh, 20 cats or something in there, um, that was animal control, sent that, that contacted me on that house, um, and there we go. I was going by there, I saw that she was out there, I stopped, the police department was already there, someone from Child Protective Services was there. The lady wasn't too happy because we were all, we all showed up and we wanted to get into the house, cause we'd heard that the living conditions were horrible. Child Protective Services took the children out of the house, so, but that lady, she moved out. The gentleman that owns it, I talked to him probably about five times, cause he had to actually evict her to get her out of there, so she hadn't paid her rent in months. And, but he's got all the windows fixed on the outside of the house, he's doing some work to the front porch, he's fixing it up, you know, he wants the rent back out again, I'm sure.
I guess my concern is just like, I mean, there are individuals that are low income that can't afford to pay somebody to come in and do this, or they're senior citizens that can't, um, and there are plenty of services out there that are available to help. It's just having that knowledge.
Well, they have to ask.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we could, we could probably make up a sheet of social program services that will help these people, you know? Yeah, we'll check with my, and see if we can do something like that. Either contact McComb, uh, but I had problems in McComb Township over there, it was the same thing. Elderly people living by themselves, men or women, male or female, they own the house, they're up in age, they have service cutting the grass or they didn't cut the grass, um, you know, the house, I mean, one of them, it smelled so bad, you couldn't walk up to the house 10 feet from the front door and have smelling, you know, feces smell coming out of the house. But there was nothing I could do. I tried to find relatives, I, I, social services says they must contact them. You know, they just can't go into someone's house, knock on the door, break it down and say, we're here to clean this house, that's not gonna happen. That's not gonna happen. If they only ask, they're not gonna, they're not gonna give them the services.
McComb County does have, Karina advertises a minor home repair assistance program. We posted it a few times.
Good information right here in the office.
Yeah, it is here.
Well, right, people are too proud, they don't wanna have to be known that someone came, well, had to come up from social services and do some work on their house or help them clean their house up, you know?
Can we have a couple of these questions?
My only comment is just thank you for everything that you are doing, you know, although maybe they're rather than a perception or whatever, but I definitely recognize what you're doing, I appreciate all that you're doing for the village.
Yeah, I mean, everything that I keep, I keep all my notes, everything is underneath the BSNA system under code enforcement. You can put, put the address in there, all my inspections are in there, what I did that day are in there, I keep very accurate notes, the date, I don't put the time in, but I put the date that I was out there, what I did, what I found, what I left. I mean, I, I always have to, in this job here, I was learned that over in McComb, you better keep accurate notes because you're not gonna remember what you did three months ago. So you better have accurate notes.
And you wear many different hats too, as a lawyer.
Oh, yeah, code enforcement's not an easy job, you know, and if you wanna, like I said, if you wanna make enemies, be a code enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
President Dova.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just touching on, uh, Mr. Benjamin, the, uh, I think we see, uh, the improvements, and unfortunately, the process is slow, because one thing that I've often talked to this about is that when we get to court, we wanna be in a position to win, okay? We can rush the court, and if we rush the court, the judge is gonna say, well, have you given them time to apply? Well, now we gave them seven days, well, I'm gonna give them six days. So we need to be able to be in a position to win, so when we go to court. But I think in time, uh, the work that Mr. Benjamin is doing, uh, I think we will, start seeing the improvement. I promised you a letter or in writing a process, and I'm gonna be touching on a number of subjects tonight. But I promise I won't be long. The first one is pertaining to the upcoming tour, and this is really simple, I think you all have it at your place, and, um, talking about the audience visit and the people that really should be involved in this. And talking about that all of you visit, and the people that really should be involved in this. And there was one individual that was left off, and that's a representative from McComb County Planning Department. But it's important to, uh, to understand the rationale behind this. Is that when we are conducting the tour, and this is something new to us, okay? I mean, you know, this is a whole new horizon that we're hoping becomes common, okay? But we need to make sure we have the right people in place. Because I'm sure when these companies start sending out reps to tour our little community, they're going to have questions. And there are certain people who can answer these questions, okay? Either myself standing in this current position or whoever stands in this position should be able to answer questions. And these questions may be simple, are there water and sewer in that area? That's why the superintendent of VPW is going to be available, okay? Yes, there is, no, there isn't. The zoning, Dave Colner, building inspector, has 50 years of experience. He was appointing man the major expansion when McComb Township started to grow and then Washington Township started to grow, he was the appointing man. He was their individual who these corporations and companies contacted and had to deal with so that he can steer them on the right path, okay? They may have questions as to tax evasion. They may have tax, uh, questions pertaining to whether the village has the will to do water and sewer extensions or road improvements, okay? And those are questions that only I can answer, okay? Because, because I know the budget. I know whether it is $1 or $1 million there, okay? So, it's important that we have the right people in place. And, 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 you know, like my note says, like my letter says, I commend this commission, you know. I will never attempt to stop you from attracting interest, okay? This commission, whether it's any other individual who, who has a contact or knows someone who knows someone who knows someone, and, and, you know, who would like to steer them in our direction, I will never attempt to stop that. We want people to take a look at us. But when they take a look, we have to put on our best face. Because our first opportunity may be our only opportunity. And if it's bad, it may be bad for the next 20 years, okay? So, we need to make sure that it's good, it's right, it's proper, it's professional, okay? So, with that being said, but I know, I've heard of this January 15th date. To date, I still don't have the time, a place to meet and the individual who's coming and what our game plan is. Well, I would hope that we would all have it well in advance, you know, so that I can set my schedule and make sure I'm available. I know that morning I have a breakfast to attend. If it's an AM meeting, then I got to change, I got to find somebody to breakfast, and we have this breakfast. So, there, these are, this is information that needs to be shared with this board and those individuals who are going to participate in this, um, tour. So, I would hope to get that as soon as possible. Also at your place tonight, I took the opportunity to print off and share with you a couple pieces of information pertaining to planning commission, and one is just powers and duties. In case someone didn't know, okay? In case someone didn't know what your responsibilities are. Because your responsibilities can become huge. And especially as development, um, comes to the village, it's really going to become huge, okay? Even when it comes to the site plan reviews and all the other things that you guys must go through and public hearings and zonings and, you know, you're going to get requests for special lands, you're going to get requests for whatever, okay? You're going to be, I hope you're overwhelmed. That means there's activity, okay? And we want activity, okay? And at the same time, I come across, and I knew this to be fact, but I happened to come across a, um, chapter in the planning document that, um, this commission is supposed to elect officers on an annual basis, okay? And I want that to happen, okay? We need to make sure that the members of this commission and whoever's meeting at the officers are there because this membership wants them to be in that place, okay? So, you guys need to schedule your annual meeting. And it probably should take place as soon as possible. Also, I was reading through your, and this is how I found out, this is how I found out to invite Mr. Benjamin here. I was reading through your minutes, and I see on a number of occasions, there were things that were mentioned, and I've heard of no follow-up. One was, um, discussion continued to include community complaints with regards to brokenness and street signs around the village suggested to bring issue before the village council. Has anyone made contact with the VPW superintendent? That's where it goes. It doesn't come to council. That's where it goes. Private citizen, board member, commission member, you got a street sign that's missing? Pick up the phone and call.
That's the entire community, no matter what their...
No, excluding Pembroke, Decorum, Amherst.
Let me rephrase it. So, anyone within the community has their position to make that phone call?
If you see it, call it.
Why are those three Amhersts excluded from that?
Because you're responsible for your own signs.
Why?
Because that's in your...
Vitals.
It's not in H.O.A. vitals.
What is Master D. on the vitals?
Is it on Master D.? I assume there's, there's city streets, but street signs.
Because, because, because you guys require a different type of state post. I think at Amherst you have wooden posts, and you guys...
We don't, we don't have any specials.
You have metal posts, but the little two-by-two posts, they don't need M.D.A. requirements. And if we're going to assume responsibility, we're going to make sure that our liability is covered.
You're talking the street label signs, like the street name signs, okay, that makes sense.
Yes, yes, excluding those communities.
But not stop signs and arrow direction signs and...
Stop signs, and I just brought stop signs to council just recently because of, particularly in Decorum, I want a stop sign, I don't want a stop sign. I don't want the posts to be there, I don't. We will not address any signs unless it comes from the board, from the...
H.O.A. board.
H.O.A. board.
What about inside Chinook, the Chinook subdivision?
Yes, we're responsible.
Okay, yeah, that's where that came from.
Because we know that the sign at the corner of Stevens and Clark Street was replaced and was stolen within 24 hours.
Wow.
Okay, we can't buy them quick enough, and we buy them in quantities.
What people leave a sign?
Okay, and we know that there was at least one post taken down, you know, that was hit by a vehicle, that the post had to be replaced, okay? Uh, we know there was an issue on Decorum, where the little two-by-two, um, posts that the signs were on, the strong winds were blowing them out, well, they're only being put in ground 18 inches. We put them in four feet, and we called up this dig and make sure we don't hit anything. Okay, we use the green M.D.A. spec post, okay? That's how we put up a sign, okay? The bottom of the sign shall be no lower than seven feet according to M.D.A., okay? There are signs on Decorum that I had to walk through and hit my head on. So, we're not responsible for those signs because we don't assume the liability for them.
Why don't we make the subdivisions meet the standards of sign and street signs?
I'm sorry?
Why don't we, why doesn't the village require the subdivisions to meet the standards for street signs?
Well, because of your Master D.'s and whatnot, I mean, these are things, these are legal issues that probably have to be, you know, worked out.
I know for Decorum Park, that's something that's on my agenda for this year is to visit all the street signs. Because I also noticed that not only do we have the two-by-two metal street signs, but I also noticed, I never really have driven around and paid attention to it, but like the whole street still has wooden signs.
Yeah, I think those wooden ones are supposed to be tempered.
Right.
And most of them are gone, except for those streets that aren't developed yet.
So, that's one of my personal agenda items that I'd like to do for Decorum Park at least. I don't know if I can get Decorum Park North on board as well, but...
And there was also a discussion about, um, renaming the street. And I think part of the discussion...
It was just the last month, in the last month's minutes.
And recognition to do something else, that is rename a park, I mean, the Fountain Park as opposed to renaming the street. We thought that had to go to council.
For your information, I already had a discussion with, um, an individual about doing something in the street, okay? And knowing that to actually change the name of a street is a big legal process. I mean, the county gets involved and there's all kind of hoops you got to jump through. But it was going to be suggested that we not change the name of the street, that we just add a memorial sign, um, a street name in memorial to the street sign. But Main Street will still be Main Street, but it may be Ryan Nessie and Boulevard, okay? In time.
I have a whole staff under that.
And that doesn't cost anything, except for the cost of a sign, okay? So, I think, and I think Semet, you would agree with me.
Correct, a dedication would not change the legal...
A dedication would not require all these hoops, okay? So, I get a phone call today during lunch with Semet that, that there's a group of people coming to Tuesday's council meeting asking council to rename the park, Fountain Park, okay? And, and I'm going to say this the way it is, you and I met yesterday, and you didn't mention this to me. We met in the office across the hall, and not once did you mention that you were gathering people to come to council.
No, I was, I was invited. I wasn't gathering.
Okay, the person that called me, which I appreciated, you know, he's a friend, and he said, I should give you this call because I was asked to gather a group of people to come to council. And I don't mean for the planning commission meeting to be my soapbox. But while I'm here, I'm talking to this commission who has obviously spoken on these issues, okay? To come to council to ask council to rename a park, okay? I think the intent, that my intent was going to be sufficient. It would align this individual in a way that his family would have appreciated. I think when we start renaming parks, okay, we can look at the history of this community, and there's a lot of deserving people, and we could reach back 50 years and say, maybe they're more deserving, okay? I don't want to get into the habit of renaming parks, okay? That's my opinion, okay? But it's a process, and as a village president, I'll be the first to say, I feel slighted. Because there are things going on that I'm reading in the minutes and the chair and the secretary does not even take the time to inform me of. And I want it to stop.
Well, excuse me...
You are not, you are not allowed to speak. I want it to stop, okay? I have put in place on this commission, people that I want to lead this community. And I know that the people that I'm looking at can lead this effort, okay? But I want the craft to stop. When my name is mentioned, I expect a phone call. When my name is mentioned, give me an email. If Mr. Benjamin is wanted here, I should have been contacted to contact Mr. Benjamin. If I hadn't read these minutes, he wouldn't be here, okay? I want the professionalism to rise to the surface, and if it can't, I want resignations.
May I see? Oh, thank you very much, because I, shame on me, because I made an assumption that, with all due respect, Loretta, that the chairperson, because I'm looking at council minutes and there's a planning commission section, like what happens at the council meeting during that time period?
I was going to say, if anything, I'll take responsibility, and I should have brought that to the council at the next meeting and mentioned that. I think at the last council meeting, we were more excited about market profile.
And I guess, like I said, I made an assumption that this information was being funneled through that way. So, please accept my apologies, and I do appreciate you coming here because there should never be any surprises at any one's table.
I wouldn't have surprises. I might have surprises for my birthday.
Changing the recognition to the park was, was something that came from, from this table. But we thought we were following the process by giving it to the liaison and it's supposed to be approved by the council.
I should have been immediately informed.
Same with the street sign.
I should have been informed before the sun set the following day, okay? I don't like being in that voice.
I organized no group of people that came to me, and I said, well, because they were still talking about a sign. I said, well, we found out, I found out from discussion at the meeting that we can do something else that's easier, and that is adding a sign to the park because it wasn't the Haven, the old bank. Yeah, and we thought it was going to be simple, easier to do and noticeable, and it was taken to the council. It was going to be handled at the council.
When we start renaming the parks, and I'm going to give you a prime example. Let's say we renamed Fountain Park to Reverend John O'Mat, John O'Mat Memorial Park, okay? Being a Baptist minister, then we got to start considering what we hold in that park, okay? Do we hold a festival with a beer tent? He would not support that. Do we hold a rock and roll festival? He would not support that. So, when you start attaching a name to a park, you have to also remember the individual that you're naming this park after, and would they, would that fall in line with their beliefs? But renaming the street, I think in time, would be proper. Not only for Reverend Matt, but there's a few other individuals. Not, not only for Reverend Matt, but there's a few other individuals. And like I said, I've been here sixty-two years. I'm on the forty. You know, but there are a number of individuals who have done a lot in this community over the years that have been lost by time. But I mean, if you really wanna recognize the people, okay? Then, you know, let's, you know, let's take a serious look at the, the people that have really, really committed themselves to this community. And let's not just jump. I mean, Reverend Matt's only been gone, what, four months, five months, okay? I think we need to take, take the time and take a look at what we should do to recognize individuals. And, and of course, he would be included in this discussion.
Chris, I would also like to speak a little bit on my own behalf, if I could, please. And, and I understand what you're saying, but with all due respect, I will say this. She's a paid employee that is paid to come here and take minutes, and there should be an acting secretary at the table that she's gonna take the minutes, she's gonna write them up, they're gonna be submitted to the secretary, the secretary's gonna approve them, and then they would be forwarded to. But I understand how you feel, but I don't think it's appropriate. I mean, if she can't have a say at the table, I don't think she should be grouped in the same. It's our responsibility, the seven of us, not...
Not that this board directs her to...
Correct. We did not direct her to do that, so...
Thank you, Tracy, for that.
You know, I did, I just, I don't want, I don't think it's appropriate. I think it's our responsibility, it was our responsibility to do that, not hers, so...
Knowing expectations, I'll take that. It's my learning lesson that after each meeting, I'll make a point to update you. You know, how do you think that will be coming across to council, either that night or the next night?
Like I said, you know, when my name is mentioned, then I expect to be, you know, because you're, you're, you're having conversations that where obviously my name has been brought up. So I, you know, wanna be included in this, so that I know that, okay, you know, let me invite Mr. Benjamin, you know? And, you know, I'll make sure that I'm available to come tonight.
Okay, Mr., may I speak?
You gotta ask the chair that.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. I'd like to say thank you for that, because I was along the same lines. You know, there was no clarification of that. So for the record now, would you like me to include you even though it is not, you know, my responsibility as a recorder to do that? Would you, who are you expecting to get that information from?
If my name is not brought up and if there's no issue that you need to hear from me about, I'll just wait until I see the minutes. But, you know, when my name is brought up in conversation, then I'm, I'm here expecting, and because I think they, it said something about, it was suggested that the planning commis, committee invite President Dober to Chris Benjamin. I mean, that's what the minutes said.
Right. So, so you expect that to get that moving forward?
Someone should invite him.
Right, so moving, okay. You're absolutely right, but moving forward.
Would it be your chair, or would it be the liaison?
Right.
Who are you?
I think as a committee, we have to make those decisions, and so that's gonna be probably one of our first orders of business at our next meeting.
And, and we're gonna assign or vote into place, we're gonna...
Officers.
Officers, thank you very much. And then at that time, we'll make those decisions about what the chain of command is gonna be, what our rules are as a committee is going to be.
Other than the chair, how many positions are there?
Well, there should be a co-chair, there needs to be a secretary.
And a secretary and clerk?
Well, because again, her role here is just as a minute taker, she's just the recording secretary. So once those minutes would be prepared, they would be passed on to the secretary of the committee. That person would approve them, and then they would be formally submitted for, to council. They have to be publicized, maybe submitted to arena for, for what the next, I mean, they're just very simple practices that happen.
Any other questions for me?
Uh, yes, one more. I'm gonna go backwards on your agenda. Okay, we covered that, those things will take care. How about all the meeting? Can we go back to that a moment? So what, you did, I'm gonna do ask, do you wanna have that discussion now?
Just as an update?
Well, I think he's here and we're all here, so it would be appropriate.
That's why we like Bob's away.
Right, exactly. And, and the thing of it is, they pick a date, January fifteenth. It is Magnificent King Day, and I did call and speak to this lady named Marion Schwartz, who's a surveyor. She is a surveyor. She comes out and she represents a number of retail operations. She visits the areas and identifies hotspots where they would like to be. And then it goes, it, it goes back to the retail, okay? But the first thing she does is identify, drive through, make sure they even want, this even fits. Okay, so it's not sit down tour time yet, you know, I'm assuming, because we lost two weeks too for the holiday. There were no, you know, they weren't, they weren't around. So at this point, we, I've got calls in, just to verify, based upon our conversation yesterday, Mr. Dober, to verify that the fifteenth still works and exactly what is gonna happen.
What time?
Didn't get a call. But I'm not gonna waste your time, like I said yesterday.
No, I have something else going on the fifteenth, but even though the time's like an adjust.
Gotcha.
In, in this sort of case, when you know someone's coming specifically to the Crown Village, is there anything special to prepare?
No, I live in Plano, you know?
I always come to my house to get my vacuum and dust, you know?
No, you know, I, I do that when I work in the plant, you know, the...
Paint, maybe you're a painter, paint, work in the...
Yeah, everybody wanna paint all the stratus lines and... Look, this is us.
Right.
We're a manufacturing facility. Why do we have to put on this, you know, put this tux on this pig? Okay?
No, and I'm saying, let's, let them lead us in this, because we have not done this before. Let them, I know everybody, you know, got a story about it because they called and all of that, but it's, you know, I, I feel confident that the process, it should come from them, because we're getting in on their bandwidth. They're not getting in on ours. So just give it, give it the time, give them their time. They said the fifteenth, look, have their time to communicate with us.
Right, but if someone is coming, like, well, and it's a surveyor, or, or are they, is this on their own visit?
Well, I'll tell you something.
Do they?
They set the date, but the surveyor, I think it's very important, they're not necessarily gonna sit down in suits. She may, they may drive through Grashit and identify some spots, and they call us back for the fifteenth. I don't know.
So we may not even be involved in this?
The first visitor.
Yeah, for fifteenth.
Maybe, that's what I'm, and I got that information from somebody else who is a surveyor who does the same job. And he said, well, wait, take the lead from them. If they're coming and, and, and they're coming up Grashit, New Haven, Richmond, Chesterfield was on her list two weeks ago, and I haven't heard why Chesterfield rejected them. That was a part of my own message today. So I would say right now, don't cancel your meeting on the fifteenth, because, you know, this process is just beginning. So, I mean, it doesn't, something big like this doesn't happen in one meeting.
Do you have email communication from them, or is that something you could forward to Mr. Dober?
Yeah. Except that bringing somebody else in to talk might be premature, because you're taking the lead away from them. Surveyor, my friend, the surveyor.
Which I could appreciate that, you know?
And I don't want, I wanna set the meeting when the decision makers are available, not somebody that's a surveyor. She might have somebody with her, I don't know, because we haven't spoken, just got back to, you know, in business today.
I guess it was just presented initially that you were going to be giving them a tour.
No, I never said the word tour. I don't know, there was a lot of talk about all this, but I, you know, the tour came out in writing. No, not a tour, not on the fifteenth. The tour is coming, you know, it would have to, I, I, you know.
Well, and I could call us, having come to see you, inviting us if we wanted to attend.
Be available, is what I said at that first meeting, because at that point, we didn't know exactly, we knew, I knew less then than I do now. She said, I think we're gonna be coming through that area, uh, New Haven, Chester, she said Chesterfield, New Haven, and Richmond on the fifteenth of January. That's what I repeated. So they could be in a car, they could be at Dollar General.
I misunderstood what you were presenting that evening, so I'm not sure, did everyone else misunderstand? Okay, so that's fair enough.
I was taking them on a tour.
Well, the statement was, just to reiterate, I mean, you weren't gonna take them down the backroads. I do vividly recall that statement.
Yeah, exactly.
And so from that, the perception is you're going to take them down the good roads, is how I perceive that.
That's different, yeah.
Okay, so...
There's nowhere, there's nowhere, somebody said, oh, oh, yeah, um...
Rob said, yes, he wanted to ensure that they were ready.
Rob said, it looks kinda crappy, you know, I don't take, you don't wanna take, take them someplace crappy. So no, I wouldn't. You know, you take them to a space that fits what they want.
The, I mean, there's only a couple parcels within the building, sadly.
Right, and they wanna be on, you know, everybody wants to be on Grashit.
Wasn't the work for your breakfast on the fifteenth or your other plans, is that something that you would need a, would it be a council representative that you would need in place if that's gonna changes?
Yeah, a nine cup breakfast at McNair's.
Um, I mean, I do have that day off, so if, if it has to be a last minute, you know, I am available.
Only problem, I was taking my granddaughter with me.
Ah, thank you.
I can make her some fidgets.
She's got a really nice car, she'll love it.
I was gonna ask you that, her drive, she's gotta admit.
So, given this week, okay? Anybody that has, has worked in places where you do presentations, you know, things don't always happen in the first phone call. You know, we were just fortunate. I called them, they called us back, and everybody was excited, and I'm glad everybody was excited about it. You know, but don't, don't put words, you know, in my mouth that I didn't actually say you assumed, because I said, I won't take them down raggedy streets. I mean, no, I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't do that. I would take them where it fits that they say that they want to be. Why would you take them to a neighborhood, well, nothing they really, they care about is the population. You know, the population, and, and it's, it's a, it's a beautiful thing, and I'm not gonna let anybody take the joy, because the work needs to be done, has to be followed up on. And called yesterday, followed up, left messages, and, and like I said yesterday, President Dober, I would not use up an hour of your time without something concrete being made, like the other time we had a meeting with somebody. And it was on time, and you were the people who got the money, and that's what we need to do here. Give it the time to put them in the position that they wanted, that, that they need to be, and it'll make it more interesting, you know? Just like you said, you said yesterday, it's very possible, it's hard to get a big national chain to come to a little place like this. But we had a good conversation, and the lady happened to say, we are coming in that area around January fifteenth, and we'll be looking at so and so, so and so, so, and New Haven is right around there. And we just got real excited, some folks got on their high horses and took off with it. That's what happened. That's the truth.
I guess I don't understand that, but with all of this being...
What part don't you understand?
What the, your last statement, I don't...
People got excited, leaked on it, other people called, called them, making us look silly.
Oh, one other thing that I have, and I've noticed this, and I've had a couple conversations with a couple commissioners, and I didn't really, you know, but I... The planning commission agenda, quite often is thin, light. And then the two or three meetings that I've attended, there's a tendency to put a lot of things on the agenda.
Right.
The agenda needs to be set.
I agree.
The agendas need to be out. You meet on a Tuesday, historically, you would have your agenda no later than the previous Thursday. And any coordinating, any communication that went along with the agenda item. The agendas need to be set, the information needs to be sent out so that the commissioners have proper time to prepare. Now, there may be those occasions when something needs to be added. But let me also remind you that don't put yourself in a position of acting on an item that you add at the table.
Big red flag, huge red flag.
Okay? Don't put yourself in a position to act on an item that you add at the table.
Because the public is not being aware of it before the study.
While I have to defend you legally, you may not wanna...
So I got one quick thing to say. I have, I have so many other things I wanna say based on your comments that I think you have, you have nailed a headline on. But the common thing, and even Jenny brought this up last week, this communication is absolutely terrible amongst this group. It's horrible. It's, 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 the simplest things would put us so much further ahead. Send an email to the commission, tell us what's going on, tell us what you're thinking, tell us what you're doing. If anybody's doing anything with anybody, anything's going on, if you need to edit it, you edit it. And, and like, there's a agenda here tonight that I have no clue what this Victoria Street thing is about, no clue. So whoever edited it, who edited it? I have no idea who edited it. So I haven't emailed everybody ahead of time, saying, this is gonna be the agenda, this is the backstory, this is what's going on.
Did you need your research?
It wasn't. I will say that wasn't patented. I will say that only because I have such a pet peeve about, I will say that only because I do totally agree with everything else. I have such a pet peeve about it not being patented.
Were there any supporting applications?
There was, the application was in there.
Okay, all right, sorry. But, hey, that's a bad, that was a bad example, but you know, right, otherwise.
I just got the country, and, and, you know, I don't like doing this, but I will if I need to. Because I took that with plenty, each one of your stations was a, a two or three sheet of paper that kinda gave you a, a little history on that, um, yeah, I didn't have to. That just kinda gave you some history on that topic, but I just took that upon myself to share it with you.
I don't know, I missed the, the rest of the package, I hang up. Anyway, communication, man, we gotta communicate with each other, you know, the council, and, and any of our liaisons, our support staff, or our coenforcement, you know, just communicate. I know everybody's afraid to use email for communication, but as long as we're not deliberating or emailing making decisions, you can't send emails, you can answer emails, can't be making decisions or deliberating about decisions or actions we're gonna make. But you can send an email.
He doesn't come, I mean, he's available, I mean, he's gonna go, I think he's gonna go wrap a hockey game later on tonight, but, you know, but he can come. I can come, or anyone else, you know, if you need a village attorney, if you need whoever, but we need to know in advance. And we can make anybody available, you know, for questions and answers and whatnot. But you're right, there is no law against sharing an email, just don't ask for opinions.
Right.
It's just, it's just information sharing.
Yeah.
Just to follow up on the, on the communication, I know, um, this has been something that's been brought up in the past as well. Um, as far as the emails, uh, the, um, village is working on getting email addresses for everybody. Um, I know that was going to start here in January, so, I mean, it's only the third, it's, it's, you know, still early, but uh, everybody will be, I understand, everybody will be assigned email addresses as part of the commission. Um, the email addresses are accessible, um, you know, on your mobile phone and all that. Uh, there's a web portal that you can, you know, webmail, you can log in and get your email through there. Um, if you decide you don't like to use it, it's not recommended, but you could forward it. Um, you know, if you're very adamant about having, going to a Gmail account that you already created. Um, again, it's not recommended, but the main thing is that we need that email to be going through the Village of New Haven's email. We need that record.
Because we're, we're going from Gmail to, that, that work?
Village, Village of New Haven, dash Michigan, uh.
Backdoor.
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 And I would recommend that they only be allowed to use the, they not to be allowed to use other than the village email. We have the vast interest of the village.
I love you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I do want to say that I appreciate the presentation of clarity. Uh, this is not the first time I've been on planning, but even last time, we never, we always kicked things to the council. No matter what it was. It was, if a decision had to be made, we gave it to the liaison, and it was handled that way. Never heard about, take the request for assigned straight to DBW, never heard of such a thing. Makes sense, but we never worked that way. And, uh, and like I had said before, this, uh, this president is making this a very, very active, busy commission. It ain't never been like that before. It was primarily site plans, we'd be out of here in twenty-five, thirty minutes. But now, you know, and I, I have read the, um, the pamphlet on the planning commission many times, and I never saw that was the process that we use, we always, that's why the liaison was here, to take it back to the council. Because a lot of times, we go to council meetings, and we're not there. So, you, you are the representative, I, I go to the meetings, I'm just like, we're not there, and, and I have wanted to repeat what we did. But didn't know what to do.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely think that as an action, I don't know, you know, if, if we're saying that we're going to kick something over to the council, I definitely need to make President Dilver and the rest of the council aware.
Mr. Bessie had been bringing information back to council, which we certainly appreciate, because there was a gap for a few months that we, um, didn't have that. And I think as time goes on, um, you know, because it's a learning curve, and also, you know, what's important, what's, you know, what needs to be brought back. And we don't want to full, you know, verbatim, you know, after what took place tonight. But, uh, I think you've been hitting on some items that are important, okay? Um, but like I said, some of these smaller items that I, I saw that were part of the discussion, we don't want them. We're a last resort, not the next resort, okay? If you know me at all, my council meeting starts at seven. After nine, I revert to something that doesn't look as good, okay? I don't like marathon council meetings, okay? We, the council is ready to conduct the business of the village. And I'm, 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 that's my DBW, completely fails on the street signs, that is not our concern. Because if they can't handle that, then I'll find somebody that will, or can, okay? We don't need all these little piddly things coming to council. You know, we have many other decisions to make, and that's what we're here to, you know, decide on, you know? So, I mean, you know, don't, please don't start referring everything to council. Because that's not, you know, we're just not there for that. I mean, we will handle them. Not happily though, okay? Because there's other people in place, there are department heads in place that should handle those items. And like I said, if we, if those department heads can't, then we'll find somebody that can.
Chris, what do you prefer as far as the leads go?
You just won't let me sit down, will you?
No, we get these leads, well, I don't want to leave it open, because this, it is a hot topic, and I want a, a decision made now. What would you like us to do with these leads? So, for example, if I know somebody that talk about, and they want to open a talk about, do you want me to talk to talk about, or do you want me to have you talk to talk about?
No, you can break the ice, but you you can break the ice, but you just can't commit. And, 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 you know, that's what I'm saying, you can't, no one can say, oh yeah, we can do this for you, or we will do this for you. You know, your conversations need to be somewhat guarded, you know? Hey, an item. Okay? You know, and, I mean, I'm not opposed to, you know, these conversations, I said, I encourage these conversations, because they need to take place, because, I mean, but we have a lot of people here who walk in a lot of different, um, avenues, okay? You meet people that I probably don't meet, you meet people that, you know, I probably don't meet, you know? So we're all, you know, but when we come across them, let's have that conversation, let's put on our smiley face, and, you know, let's invite them out to take a look. You know? And, you know, when they get to that point where they really want to come and take a look, and that's when, we need to make sure that we got the right people there to answer those questions, because, you know, someone's going to ask them questions. And it's important that we don't say, well, uh, 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 well, you know, I'll get back with you. We need the people in place that answer these questions.
Right, I agree with you, and I don't, I guess, I would make an assumption that most of us cannot answer any of those questions. So, that's what concerns me about this fifteenth meeting, that he does need to participate in that, if that's, that's happening.
Right. We'll see if it.
You know, and I said, you know, we need to be able to answer those questions, because I think they're, they're right up in the ass.
In the position to try to answer anything like that, nor want to, I waste his time if it's not the right person. You gotta get the right person too, and that is very important.
I don't mind spending my time, that's what I'm here for.
I was just going to say that, that's weird.
But I just need to know in advance, I mean, you know, this whole Dollar General, I won't say I, but I conducted a lot of business on that Dollar General from my deck in Florida. You know, talking to the project manager, Tom, Todd Hamler, who's out of Ohio, okay? But it's, it, it, that's what I did, I mean, that's what I needed to do to move that project along, you know, along with everyone else that, you know, worked on it. But when there was questions, and there was things, and there was roadblocks, Todd would call me, and I'd sit out back with a cup of coffee, and we'd get a result. But it's just, you know, that's what I'm here for, so I'm always in communication, I mean, in communication with that fancy phone you guys get, you still like my flip phone. But, but, you know, so, I mean, that's what I'm here for, you know? And I will never, you know, not take a phone call because I'm on vacation. I mean, I, I walked through Flea Marcus and Key West, talking to Dan. It's just, it's just, hey, you know, yeah, I know, I know, the wife was spending money, and I was talking to Dan.
Uh, set public hearing date for special land use for five, six eight zero Victoria. We have your packets sent to you. Jeff?
Uh, speaking as the planner, uh, this probably shouldn't have gotten to us. Uh, it's come to my attention that there are a number of code violations on this property. Uh, I think there's a certificate of occupancy was never, um, issued. Uh, there's a number of violations, um, with that being said, um, until the petitioner potentially has their house in order, uh, this board does not have to set a public hearing to honor the special lands and three lots at this time.
So there'll just be no action or table?
So, the, the application itself is missing, because I'm missing something, but yeah, but it's missing a bunch of the stuff that has to get checked off. The site plan was not included in, in, you know, uh, this fifteen copies of the site plan, not the site plan.
It's, I think it's either no action or table until they come into compliance.
Well, the, the application itself is, is being completely edited, should we just deny the application?
Well, we, I think we need to have the application, yeah? So I'll make a motion to deny the application.
A motion has been made, excited to deny the application for five eight six zero Victoria. Uh, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Other matters of discussion? Public comments on non-agenda items?
Hi, uh, just to introduce myself, my name's Norman Petrovsky, I'm in the shop on the corner there in the lot on New Haven and Greshit. Just to give you guys a little catch up, uh, last week, or last month, we had a meeting, uh, ZDA board has to do with the U-Haul trucks and the outdoor storage out there. I'm basically here to open dialogue, I'm not necessarily sure how, you know, to go about it, but, uh, I'd like to, you know, work with you guys and come to a compromise where we can, you know, all be happy. Uh, so, I don't know if I can contact some of you guys, or I don't know necessarily how it works, but just to go through the sort of steps that we need to go, so that, uh, people would be, I guess, obliged or happy with the situation over there. Uh, just, you know, like, being on the same page, and, you know, Chris, who I've talked to a couple times, uh, they wanted me to move the stuff behind the fence, you know, then at the ZDA board, they're telling me, you can't have it behind the fence, so I just, again, it's got to be all on the same page. I don't know necessarily where, but, uh, if you guys have any questions now, I might be able to answer some, or some dialogue.
So, let me jump in real quick, so, the, what I don't, I hope no one tonight will give you advice on what we all, any of us think you should do with your property, it's heavy for the back of us to do, and we should do that, should do that at table or out of table?
It's not necessarily.
I know, I know that, I'm just fairly, fairly good at board, I'm taking that comment. Um, and we get, like, we just denied this, this application, I think that's probably where you need to start, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is an application for land use, and it's supposed to include the site plan, and all, all things this guy wants to do with this land. And I think that's probably where you need to start as well.
Well, that's, and that's kind of why I'm here, uh, you know, a site plan, again, there's got to be some kinds of cost cutting, I, again, I've never really done that, we've had that there. I'm not gonna, you know, I necessarily don't know how much it costs, but I'll explore those.
Well, I don't, I think it's the size of all that you think, so if you look at this application, it's, it tells you kind of what you need to do, um, and what you need. And a, a site plan doesn't necessarily have to be something prepared.
I brought a site plan to ZDA board, I, I did. Yes, but it was done with a, I have a actual survey of the land, and then I basically have a fence that was built, that's measured by the contracting company, and then I, I divided up the, uh, the spaces basically by hand. The only thing under by hand is, is the, is the parking. So I don't know if you guys, that's what I'm saying, is that sufficient enough? You're just actually seeing the length across, you know, you're seeing everything there, everything is done by survey, except for my parking spaces. So now I'm going to go, you know, I have to go get a survey company to do my parking spaces, that's, that's what I'm saying, that's why, speaking to you guys personally, yes.
Uh, Jeff, would you be able to connect him with, would you, would you be able to help him and guide him through the process of what he need, or would you be able to connect him with someone that could?
I believe starting with the building department of Florida, that was the first step. Um, the only comment that I will add here is that, um, the outdoor storage, the fencing, all of these items that are being discussed are either not permitted in general business, or have incited as violations prior. So, this almost is the same case as Georgia, we began at Victoria. There was a period of time where the initial request for ZDA was for interpretation of the ordinance in terms of settlement. When we did get to ZDA, there was some confusion, as time has elapsed, and different uses have come on the property. Uh, I guess there was some discussion in previous, um, council meeting about where things could go. Um, there seems to be a disconnect in terms of moving things behind the fence, the fence isn't supposed to be there, there's always to be outdoor storage.
But, there was a fence there prior to anything, so like, there was always a fence there, always. The fence was moved up.
Again, it becomes, that, that becomes a force push.
So was I supposed to, okay, all right, I'm not here to argue, but my, my point being, I'd like to be, again, um, I would like to open the dialogue, I guess the whole point of this thing, to understand what I need to do and the process, and for you guys to understand, if you're talking, you know, just sit here and listen. I have an old building, there's a lot of repairs that need to be done. Now, you're talking, you know, we're right on the corner there, it's, it's one of the, you know, decent spots there, and, and they say, I'd like to buy your spot. I'm not going to go spend a hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars on, you know, setting up this grand foray thing, and then somebody's going to come and try to buy out, you understand? So I have to make decisions according to what's coming in the future, I kind of, you know, it'd be crazy to just go spend that kind of money, and then six months from now, or a year from now, or two years from now, somebody want to buy up a lot, and, you know, I could just invest all that money into, you know, a parking spot. So, you guys have to understand that also, that I'm coming from that area, it's not just going to be like, alright, yeah, I got billions of dollars to throw onto this thing, millions of dollars to invest. If that was the case, I would, you know, I'd be ready to build my own shopping center. Which, actually, I do have a plan for, but that's ten years down the line, you know, I can't do that, I can't afford that. So, that is where I'm coming from. I don't necessarily, I need direction, and it'd be nice to talk to you guys personally, you know, small town, so, you know? You guys can help me out, or give me an idea.
I mean, you're not going to get anywhere, um, you gotta have a, you gotta have your, your plan documented, you gotta go through the process of, of what you want to do, or, and, and what you want to do.
You see what I wanted to hear.
So, what you want to do is what you already have.
Yeah.
Just standing here, telling us that doesn't get you anywhere, you gotta.
I, I know that, that's why I'm saying, I'm here to have the dialogue with you. So what, that's why I'm asking you now, so you give me a site plan to have my, you said, it's not permitted, what necessarily is not permitted, it's up, it's up for interpretation, my, we, we discussed this at the ZDA, those, those trucks are not commercial. Those are my product, I'm selling them outside. You know, just like Tractor Supply has their trailers outside, just like they park their stuff outside, that was up for interpretation. What the issue was, was behind the fence, which I agree. You know, we can't do nothing now, we do to the fact it's winter time, I've given them all notices, within the next three, four, or five months, those things will be out there. Okay, by the time summer comes, or spring, those, my outdoor storage will be out there. As for my U-Haul trucks, that's part of my business, you know, we discussed that. At the ZDA meeting, again, it was videotaped, stated, the trucks can stay, but I have to come as, I have to come to planning commission to open dialogue, and we go from there. And I guess, site plan, I guess, I, I, I necessarily don't know what I need.
Right, so, I think you should go through the, go through the process of this application for land use, and look at what it's telling me to do, there's boxes, and check, and steps, and everything, it's, it's pretty specific, I'm, I'm, uh, you know, I think you're, when you go through it, you'll, you'll be able to understand it better. Um, there's, there's a million questions that I ask, yes, no, not available, you know, it references, um, references, you know, zoning ordinances and everything like that, so as you go through, you're going to answer questions, and you're going to have to look at ordinances, and you're going to have to look at zoning, and you're going to be able to put together a site plan based on, you know, everything that, that lines up with the ordinance, it might be your, your interpretation of ordinances, for some moments, they're, they're kind of gray, as you could discuss at the ZDA meeting.
Yeah.
But, you gotta, you, in your site plan, you gotta, you gotta list, you gotta explain what you're doing, and illustrate it in a way that everybody at this commission needs to look at it and say, okay. "Okay, I see what you're doing. Okay, here's the, here's the ordinance, okay, looks good to us, okay, yes or no." You know, but, so that's what you gotta do, you gotta be organized with it.
Yeah, would you like to meet with me in a separate situation, is that possible?
I can certainly make, you know, talk to you and help you go through it, but I, but my personal advice is not gonna lead the direction of the commission.
I understand that, but that is my issue, is the direction of the commission. I'm gonna be able to oblige, make everybody have...
I can't myself tell you that the commission will, but I can definitely help you get somewhere that I think will get you helping me.
And that's, and that's the reason I'm here, I'm trying to meet this thing head on. To say, "Hey, listen, maybe I get it, some people aren't happy with that situation. Well, let's make, let's make it happen." So I guess I'll start with that and then we'll go from there. But, you know, in the discussion prior, that's kind of what we came to, so.
I think, I already gave my phone number.
You know, I think I left them in my pocket.
You can't, I can be...
And then also, you left me your phone number too. And it's the same situation.
We have a great resource for it and, you know, our engineer is a great resource too. We have all the resources you need to figure it out. Like I said, the ZDA, everybody wants you to come up with something that works for you and works for the village, because it's, we don't push businesses out. We wanna make work for it, we're the best businesses.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So it's, it just, and I don't even get into it for a long time. This is gonna be extremely frustrating for you. But a lot of different people work in the village now and we're gonna help you get, move along and make sure it's all right and make sure it works out for everybody.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I'm here, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not good on... Basically, I'm here. Any other questions or? All right, just cards or?
Yeah, I don't have a card. I'll write a blank card.
Oh, you're gonna cross it out?
If Kyle doesn't answer, call Ryan.
Yeah, there you go. And if you call me, I will definitely make sure Kyle answers.
Thank you.
Plan for?
Just two items tonight. Prior to the meeting, I emailed everybody and updated the document of the market study that had all the supporting retail analysis areas that they had requested. So it kind of shows basically our methodology where we're recently coming at the area from. The other thing that I had was gonna hand out tonight that kind of goes in, goes in line with our discussion of marketing the community. Just took a look at all the properties that are in the general business district that are currently vacant. Does not necessarily mean they're for sale, does not necessarily mean they're available, but marked some averages on it and really looked at, these would be our prime properties that still have a long Greshit that would be potentially available. There's ones that I don't know the history of, like, there's a property that wraps around Tractor Supply on the side. I don't know if that's what that is, you know, there's different things we need to make a look at. 4.7 acres there, there's on 26, I believe is owned industrial. But if there was some who was interested in that, that would be reasonable, reasonable to pull that into the general business districts, just right around the corner. So just as a resource.
Jeff, thank you for giving us this. I do have a question though. I'm trying to pull up our notes real quick to confirm it. But I believe the property at New Haven and 26 Mile on the east side of New Haven Road, north of 26, I believe that's general business and it's vacant. And I believe it may not, I don't know if it's still for sale, but I think at one point, really very recently, it was for sale.
Which one's that?
Sorry?
This corner here.
The warranty, or on the deed super index will say that it was Lombardo that actually owned it, which is the only reason why I remember this guy. I reached out to Lombardo and they said that they had listened and sold it.
And was it the park at L C at one point?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was Lombardo there.
Yeah.
Maybe the road development is bigger in there most recent one.
And I think that one is still, that's owned in general business, I believe.
It would be there, yeah. But for sales, it's not there for a while.
Yeah. And the reason why, the reason why I remember that one so well is because I was even thinking like, if we were to try to solicit like Starbucks or that type of business, that would be a prime spot because you would catch people going east and west towards 94.
What I'll do is I'll add that personal to this man and then I'll send you guys all the copy, by the way, if you need it.
Can this, will you add this into that market file?
Sure.
And, you know, through it on the, up rate of the D of the website?
Yeah, I'll do that then. I'll just, I'll just get by it in there.
And then to that point, so we have all these properties that are general business that we know about that are vacant. You know, they're not owned by the village, they're owned privately. So what's the process? You know, if we were to, you know, do we then have to then reach out, you know, reach out to the property owner and we have to try to negotiate them to get them to actually even sell?
Generally, I mean, there's two things I can say to that. I know that Chris had sent out a letter in the past and he contacted everybody along around the triangle property. And it just indicated that the community was in the, in the process of trying, or outside economic development, would you be interested? He indicated that there were a number of persons who said yes, but no details on that.
Sure.
In most cases, I think if you were to show these properties, most likely the site selectors, if they're interested, they would reach out and they'll make contact with the property owners and negotiate that. If we had something to bring to the deal as a piece of property, maybe adjacent to something, that we, we might need the village itself, maybe a partner at that point, then it pretty much becomes a private transaction.
Yeah, it just seems like that, that can be like a really, really big hindrance to us that, you know, we can do all this like, or even, you know, for all these, if they do say they're interested. But then if we have, you know, a property owner that I can still agree to or, you know, whatever, the whole thing could fall apart no matter how much effort we put into it.
And that's the case in all of, that we run into at the county. We get calls from the state saying, "Hey, we're looking for someone, we'd like to place something that needs 150,000 square feet of, you know, industrial." It's what you have in here, Victoria, sometimes it's difficult to fill those. Or you find a property that would be ideal, but it's not for sale or the price is right.
Right.
Those things do happen.
Anything else, Jeff?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, agenda, I have a agenda motion to adjourn.
Oh, really quick, so what date would you, if we want something added to the agenda, when, are you preparing the agenda?
No. The protocol is to...
Okay, so do you, do you prefer...
We submit things to her.
Right, but do you, as a sitting chairperson, do you prefer that if we have any requests of on the agenda, that they go to the clerk? Or do you want us to go directly to the clerk?
If you send it to the clerk, she will send me an email, so I don't know about it. But you would ask the, you talk directly to the clerk to tell her the whole business, you know, where you want it placed.
Okay, that's the process you want, okay?
I'd like, my friend said to me that you could copy the whole commission and say, "I'm adding this to that item, so you're all aware, and this is the background that goes with it."
Very good.
Yeah, it is a lot.
So maybe if we can have an organizational time period next month, we can fine tune all these things?
Yeah, I think, we'd get us some general procedures and all of them. Even I was thinking like, just you were asking Chris about the, you know, if we're talking to somebody, what do we say? What can we say, what can't we say? We should be able to put together a general dis, procedure, you know, a little flow chart that says, "I'm talking to somebody, this is the steps I'm gonna take. And if I go down this path, I go there, it's Chris's fault, otherwise I keep going, you know?" Could you even put something together?
Anything else?
I could just add one thing in terms of you guys looking at your procedures in that for next month's meeting. I know that there is, I don't have a copy, I mean, there is, there's the enabling act that Chris showed you guys tonight and gave a copy of that says, "Here's what to do." But there's also a set of bylaws for this, I believe, that I think may give details as to how you elect the senator. I think the rules are there.
Okay.
I just don't know that they've been, they've looked at.
Right. We will look at...
But you know, you can learn, or someone has to care.
Yes. I think I have.
So...
If I have a law board.
I'm just gonna make sure that it's on the next agenda.
Now, Chris had suggested an annual meeting too. Would that be held outside of these typical meetings?
Yes, there will be. That's, that was going to be my comment, that before next meeting, I think we should meet.
That could be held just at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's what I would say. You may wanna check the bylaws, because a lot of bodies like this, usually the first annual meeting that they hear it'll say in the bylaws is where officers are. I know a number of our county subcommittees and that'll work that way.
It could be a meeting before standard.
So it's not a meeting outside of the meeting at 6:00 and have the election.
Right. Maybe we could have a workshop at 6:00 o'clock? And then at 7:00 work, you know, implementing. I mean, my experience.
We'll have the election first.
Yes, at the beginning of the meeting. We can have a workshop prior to...
I don't think we can vote in a workshop.
No, we'll have a workshop, but then we'll implement at the meeting.
Right.
So the first hour would be the workshop.
Then...
You can't have the election until the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. At that, there'll be a workshop, you can back to back.
If there's any preferences that might change depending on who is elected as officers, would it be a choice to have to do it in a workshop?
No, because the policies and procedures have to be followed. Just because you're an officer doesn't mean you have the right to change the rules.
Oh, sure.
I mean, the rules are set. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just meant like as far as, you know, who to email or those type of things.
Well, I think that would happen during the workshop, that protocol would be set. Because I think that, that should be the same always. That's my opinion, but, and, you know, just my practice is.
Anything else for the good of the public? Motion to adjourn? It's part of...
It's part of...
It's part. Thank you very much.